With that, we will call the meeting over. First item with business is pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
It's a time delay.
We have to have a Jim on the table.
Thank you all for joining us. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda to move number eight, which is recess for liquor control, to number three and number four.
Second. And one other adjustment down on 14D, we talked about a parking agreement. That should be plural parking agreements. Any other? Anyone here hoping to correct that amendment?
Do without objection.
Standless has objection.
No objection is okay. Any other changes? Adjustments? Okay. Curry, we made that adjustment just for you and the liquor board, but now the sun has gone in, so we're gonna go back to reading where it was.
I'll stay in the chair.
If you want to come on up.
I'll stay in the chair.
Before we do that, public comment, sorry. Good thing Chad's here tonight. Anyone here have any public comment regarding any issue other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move recess to the liquor control board. So who makes that? Second. Second by Jim. Curry, if you want to come up, thank you.
Sure. Looks like I just had one item to bring to you all tonight. A new ownership of Nellie's Pub and Grill, so that would include a first and second-class liquor license application with tobacco application as well as a third-class restaurant bar license to sell spiritus liquors. And we have, I believe, Shannon Smith here with us and the application and the spreadsheet of all of the approved items from previous weeks.
I'm your full disclosure. I do have a sister Shannon Smith, but this is not my sister.
Your daughter's name now.
We didn't plan that.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your interest in business. I know you have one already, but thank you again for your interest in having business in St. Albans. I appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions regarding the application that was before you?
Why don't you folks introduce yourselves in the business that you already have?
Okay, so my name is Shannon Smith, and I apologize if I have a really bad cold. I am the owner of Casa Burrito, and then my husband and I, this is Jason Smith, are going to be buying Nellie's together.
A lot of people excited about this.
Us too.
It's more space for you.
Yeah, for sure.
But you're not closing down that one up there, right?
No. Not at the right now to do that.
You have a certain vision for Nellie's different than what it is or maintaining the schedule?
So on the pub side, I think Paul's done an amazing job changing that over and making it a really like place where people like to go and gather. On the club side, we go very back and forth on that. We would like actually to be more of an event space and, you know, think like retirement parties, 50th birthday parties, more bands and stuff that more wide variety of people would want to go to. You know, and then we also have that late night for the 20-year-olds wanna go, and that's a little outside of our comfort zone a little bit, but I think it is still a needed service. So we plan on looking into how to make that a little better than it currently is.
Days of operation. Proceed with it.
What'd you say?
Days of operation.
Originally, we're planning on staying exactly the way it is right now. It's closed on Sundays and Mondays, and we may, we have a lot of things to figure out, so we may open up on those days, especially Sundays, for like Sunday football and stuff, and then possibly lunchtime as well. But that would be a little further down the road, probably after the first of the year.
Curry, does Paul have a tobacco license now?
I don't think I applied.
There's not a tobacco license here. Why are you focusing?
I didn't think I did. I don't think I did apply for that. I think it's just on the same form.
Okay. Okay. And you folks are LLC, and so you know that you have an affirmative obligation to let the city know when the members of the LLC change and who they are so that they can have the same required checks as any person applying for liquor control license or liquor application. You aware of that?
Yes.
While we're looking at this and thinking about it, I don't know if we did this for Dirty Nellies or not. I'm sorry, that was their initial name. Their name now is Nellies. But I don't like the idea of restricting hours in the downtown. And if these folks wanted to open up on Sunday and Monday, I wouldn't want to restrict them to have to come back to the council because they want to open up on Sunday and Monday. I would say if they informed Curry that we're gonna open during those hours, why do we care? I mean, if it's gonna provide a business and there's gonna be people going in there and they've already have experience in the business and a good business ethic, that they should be able to make the determination whether or not they want to open up on Monday or Sunday or Monday.
I know this is, I'm okay addressing that to my question out there. I'm breaking errors, but I didn't have, that wasn't the intent of it. I totally agree.
Yeah, the current hours are, they came in here subject to those hours, but I wouldn't want to make these folks subject to those hours. Just when we go to, come to approval. That's all it is.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
I noted that you haven't had any violations on your license at your current business that you're running, and I was wondering, how long has Casa Burrito had, you have a second-class license there?
A year and a half. We have a site enter. So a year and a half.
We'd like to keep that up as well.
Keep that track record going.
We'd like to continue that trend.
That's great. I'll make a motion to approve the licenses as outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? License passes?
Good luck.
You guys, thanks.
Thanks again for your business.
Thank you. You guys have done an amazing job with the town, so it's still easier for us.
The city too, right?
Yes.
Can I roll that? No.
Now we have an amendment to approve March 11th and April 1st.
Motion to approve March 11th.
Second. Second by Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition?
Motion to approve April 1st.
Second. Second by Chad. Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Any other business on this? Curry, do you want to share with us?
Well, I did notice that I forgot to mention the outside consultant department, but they've always had that there as well. But yeah, with that, I'll follow up with them on anything I need to, and I'll send this out to the Department of Liquor Control tomorrow.
On the letter that you sent to the department stating that we were doing the approvals now?
Oh, the blanket approval?
Yeah, how did that work out? I never.
We can do that. Yeah, and I can actually do that for this one too. I can note the minutes of it actually, so I don't need to send it.
Yeah, so you can, you can do that.
Law lawyer, Mr. Mayor?
What's that, Jim?
I did realize my accident muted my phone. I was staying on the air for one minute, so it was okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Curry, your turn. Tim, your turn.
What's that?
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we will move out of the liquor control board and proceed with the council agenda. Thank you, Curry.
Thanks, Curry.
Thanks, Curry. So we talked about public comment. We're moving on to second reading of amendments to land use regulations regarding district change for 17 Congress Street. With us tonight is Mr. Chip Serra.
Hello, good evening. Good.
Thank you. Have an interview.
Planning Commission has put together a proposal to redistrict in the land use regs 17 Congress Street from business neighborhood transition district to the V1 central business sub-district. This is based on, initially on the suggestion of the property owners when they found out that that parcel is different from its neighboring parcels in the BNT district and really restricted from further development or even changes of use in existing spaces. And the Planning Commission and staff agreed that the viability of the property as it changed hands and evolved was really hampered by being in the BNT, and we suggested redistricting it to the B1. First reading with the city council was held last month, I believe, and we had some conversation with the current property owners who are in the audience today, and we also talked about some of the concerns about, from neighbors that didn't really have to do with the proposed change itself, but just making sure that the process with the DRB is used to make sure that neighbors get a say when, when anything new is proposed for conditional use or site plan review at the site going forward, and it will be. So basically, the document before you tonight for second reading just changes Article 10, both in the descriptions of parcels and meets and bounds, but also in the zoning map to take 17 Congress Street and put it in the B1 instead of the BNT.
I'll let the council know that I called, I called directory and I had a good conversation with them regarding the property, and while I'm not convinced that there's no other way that this could be sold and be used for something that is viable in that district, they have no objection as to what could go there, and therefore I have no objection what could go there.
Well, I think I had left early in the last meeting, and it perturbs the neighbor concerns. Is that, is that the only one?
Yeah, I talked to him for about a half hour. And just so you know, they gave high praise to the owners of that. Sort of nuts.
We're okay.
Good neighbors. Yeah, they're great neighbors.
Any other questions, Chip? Comments? Any public comment on this?
See, I knew there was none, that's why.
I hope that we adopt the amendment regarding V1 district for 17 Congress.
I'll second.
Second by Marie. She beat you, Jim. Any further comments?
I agree, the comment is a right.
Any further comments? Questions? Hearing none, all those who approve the change, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Nameless.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Chip, I guess you're gonna stay there.
Mm-hmm.
Chip's gonna talk about some certification for brownfield loan. Chip, we're going up, so going around the signatures on the change.
Yep.
Thank you, folks. Good evening.
Thank you.
Chip, floor adjourners?
Yes, for the Congress Main and Main Lane project, we've sought loan funds from the State's Brownfield Revitalization Fund for some of the contamination remediation costs. The loan application is handled by the Vermont Economic Development Authority, VITA, and there is a required certification from the city that basically says that we're good with the plan, we're good with what's being done, it meets our city plan and our regs, and it won't be an undue burden on what we do here in the city. So I presented the resolution for your consideration tonight, and there's a, there's a place for signatures, but if you decide to sign it, it'll just kind of spill over the pages. But I would note that the redevelopment has been approved by the Development Review Board, and city staff and engineers are working on all aspects of the project to make it successful. It's staff's recommendation that we can certify what is in this document.
Anyone have any questions, Chip? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, you wrote that the council through the resolution calls a draft for remediation of Congress and make a change on it.
Thank you, Jim. Second. Second by Chad. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those who favor the resolution, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, resolution is approved by the council. Thank you, Chip. Number nine, consider approval of extra territorial allocation application for 324 South Main Street. Hold on, sorry, I'm gonna back up to seven.
Sorry.
Update on certified local government program.
You know, just picking up on the conversation that Joe Luno started at last month's meeting, you know, I've looked at it, Joe and I have spoken to Devon Coleman, who's the state's architectural historian, and I agree that pursuing certified local government status with, you know, the Division of Historic Preservation and the National Park Service is kind of a slam dunk for the city. The only thing the city needs to adopt is just an ordinance creating our Historic Preservation Commission. Otherwise, gives us access to grants, which are mostly educational in nature, but also we can use funding for updating our historic inventories, which we found, it is something that needs to be done. Our real nomination forms for the historic district and the St. Albans city streets were done in the 80s. We're actually required by our historic, by our growth center designation to do an update. We could put those grant funds to good use, and every once in a while, grant funds for the actual restoration and rehabilitation of buildings do become available, and as a CLG, we could get access to those too. My recommendation is that, that staff prepare a Historic Preservation Commission creation ordinance, be a standalone ordinance, just to create the commission for first reading at the council's next meeting, at which time we'll have hashed out the details on how many members it should have, and we'll fully explore whether we should do any co-membership with the Design Advisory Board, Planning Commission, and other boards that might have similar, similarly interested and knowledgeable members, so we're not, you know, trying to spread ourselves too thin, we're trying to recruit folks. Let us explore those things and bring something to you for our first reading at the next meeting.
Do you know if interested parties deserve on that, even though it's not?
I would bet yes, but I haven't been able to confirm, I haven't really been able to have a good conversation with anyone, the DAB or the PC about that yet. Or, you know, we might have a couple of the boards with members who have the expertise and the desire. It's a little different, it only needs to meet quarterly, and it wouldn't be too much, so might be ripe for having it be a crop, a sort of a subset of a current city board that meets every once in a while. We'll look into it.
Would the council support, would like to send Chip on his way to come back at the next meeting? We have groundwork in place, everyone on board with that? So Chip, if you want to move forward with that, we'll see you, we'll meet you in the life.
It's it, I guess we are now.
We don't have to, we didn't wait too long.
We have, we have a light waiting after work on.
Oh, yeah.
If you can do that, Chip, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number nine, regarding 324 South Main, Westview condominium. In your package, you have an application. Don't you want to talk on that?
Try to allow the applicant to introduce himself.
David Goodrich, owner of Westview Condominiums. Our proposal is that we want to build 12 units on the land in front, the Cota property that we bought, and rather than being rental units, we want to do townhouses with attached garages and have them for sale as a entry-level affordable housing project, basically. It'd probably be, probably be two to three bedroom attached garages, three, two and a half baths, and, and I would say probably around 1,600 square feet, I'm doing the design work now on it, and I think they'll market in the low 200s as a condominium project. It'll be the fourth phase at Westview. The buildings that are there now are all separately phased, and when I built those, they were intended to be for sale as well, but the market would not allow that because of the 2008 financial collapse, and so I ended up having to keep them. But this is a totally different situation. These are gonna be low-rise, not high-rise, there's not gonna be parking garages, and I've done preliminary work with the town, with the zoning office, and they are favorable to the plan. I've had a conversation with Harold Cross, who is the fire chief, as you know, and he's okay with the design we've done. He made a comment on my initial plan, which we changed to his liking, and he's writing a letter of approval for that, so that I'll have that for the DRB meeting, once I get to the DRB meeting in St. Albans Town.
So this is where the collapsed building was, correct?
That actually is on the next door property. There's a, my property is just short of where the collapsed barn is. It goes from my driveway that goes down into Westview up to just short, probably, I don't know, maybe 20 feet short of where that barn is, somewhere in that area.
What's that, Jim?
I'm not there, I'm sorry.
None of them will be facing Route 7.
None of them will be facing.
The off-year driveway.
When we did the construction and got the permitting on Westview, the Transportation Department, DOT, made us do an access road off of our access down to the condominiums for that property because they didn't want another road cut on Route 7. So that's been in for years since we started construction.
As a goal to build them and then sell them, or sell them and kind of like build, build the soup, or?
No, I'm gonna build, I'm gonna build three plexes, four three plexes, two on each side of a driveway that's coming in through the middle, hammerhead at the back end, and it'll be, it'll be individually sold and not custom-built. There'll be options that people will be able to do, there'll be a base unit, if people want to do, if they pre-sell and somebody wants to come in and say, I want to buy a unit, but I'd like granite countertops, or I'd like whatever, then I would accommodate them, obviously, and customize them in that way. But the units will all be consistent, they'll be the same, there won't be any customizations to the outsides.
So you're gonna build the outside, the frame, and then sell it?
No, I'll build the whole units. I'm gonna, I'm gonna build the first building, I'm gonna do them as buildings of three, and I'll build the first building and mark it off the first building and sell the first units, and then start the second building, and then the third building, and then the fourth building. The first two buildings, which are on the west side of that property, are gonna probably have walkout basements, which will make them a little more advantageous, because that'll add another 800 square feet or so to the property that they can develop into a family room or whatever else they would want for the use of it.
I'm just curious, moving forward for the affiliation fee, how would we view that, that condominium association paid the building for each individual home?
Well, they'll be paid, they'll be paid by the association, be paid by me, by the developer essentially, as we build the buildings.
But year after year?
Year after, well, I mean, you know, if I sell 10 units in the first year, I'll build all 10 units. So it's gonna depend on absorption into the market.
No, but once they're fully built out, who will be responsible for the affiliation fee on a yearly basis? The condominium association?
Well, I will, as long as I own the majority of them. Once there's a majority of owners, then they'll be responsible for it.
Typically, keys off whoever's on, whoever's on the tax bill.
Yeah.
Anyone have, any questions for Mr. Goodrich? Comments? I want to, entertain an approval for the allocation request?
I'd vote to approve the water, wastewater allocation request by David Goodrich of 324 South Main Street.
Seconded by Chad. Any other questions or comments? Marie, anything?
No.
You're good. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Next on the agenda, item 10 is approval of extra territorial allocation application for Champlain Veterinary Clinic. Anyone here representing those individuals?
I didn't receive an application either. I'd suggest we table it.
I was gonna say, and I kind of went back yet. We'll move to table. Item number 10, moving forward, we'll move to item number 11, consider authorization of one-year police contract with the town. I agree. Chief, if you want to come forward. How are you tonight, chief?
Good, thanks.
Thank you for coming in. We've had conversations regarding this, so you want to give us a recap of where you...
Sure. Town High Gate approached me probably six weeks ago when I became aware that they'd also approached the state police, but they approached us and asked us if we would be interested in making a proposal to provide policing, part-time policing in their community, and they wanted it to be somewhere compatible with what they already had. So they were paying for 28 hours at the time, so I was able to put together a proposal after meeting with them and finding out their wants and desires. It was clear that they were looking for a change. We had the capacity to do this without adding more officers and without stripping any services from St. Albans City or St. Albans Town. Our officers were 12-hour shifts, literally, this would be either four, six-hour shifts or six, four-hour shifts, and we would not be responsible for calls there when we weren't there. So 15% of the time in a week, we would be responsible for some high-visibility patrols. It's mostly for, you know, there's a lot of ATD activity over there, there's a lot of speeding vehicles, there's some gatherings that occur that have been allowed to occur and have gone unanswered, and they're looking for something different. I think that it's, the way it was explained to me is, if you do the same old thing, same old way, you get the same old results, and we're looking for some different results. So this is another opportunity for us to, to expand, expand our offset revenue sources to the tune of, I think that this contract was written at $58 an hour for 24 hours a week, which amounts to $72,384 a year. We're talking about a one-year pilot project, and at the end of that year, we would take, review that to make sure that it was mutually beneficial for both communities. I wouldn't want to do anything to compromise the police department in any way. At the same time, I think we do have the capacity to do this. I think we have a product that they're interested in acquiring, and I think we can fairly and I think we can fairly easily accommodate that needs.
Chief, can you give it over to you? One question I received was staffing status. Can you pay attention to that?
I certainly can. I brought the latest. I actually updated it today. I didn't bring copies enough for everybody. But as of right now, I have hired 27 officers in all, including the existing staff. You recall that when the sheriff left, I lost one of my sergeants who went there to be a lieutenant. He returns to us at the end of this month as a sergeant. I'm trying to find it right now. I apologize. I didn't put it on the top. But I'm certain that I hired 27 officers. Two more started today. We've been extremely fortunate in that I have hired nine officers and four dispatchers in the last five weeks. I have six enrolled in the police academy, full-time police academy in August. I have two enrolled who are there now at the part-time academy. I picked up three full-time certified officers. And Parks Patrol officially started today.
Chief, when we send them to the academy, are they signing some kind of pledge or agreement to stay with us for a certain amount of time? Or do we put them through the academy and then they bolt right out, right after they graduate?
They were not. But with signing bonuses, and we're careful about how we assign signing bonuses, we ask in exchange for a three-year contract and a repayment ratio of one-third of whatever it is that they give for signing contract per year for those three years if they were to leave early. More important than money, quite honestly, is I don't know a single chief that if he found out that somebody had given their... If I hired somebody, they gave their work, they stayed for three years, and they weren't going to stay for three years. We had a case where that happened in Williston, and the chief said, "I'm not touching it for another year. You have another year left in your obligation." It's a credibility issue. So if you sign a contract, it's less legally binding, I think, than ethically. It says a lot about the character of the individual. So we are asking them to do that now.
Do we have, do you have some kind of plan to engage with the current law-abiding citizens with ATVs in Highgate to try to ramp down some of that illegal activity in the town?
We do. You know, one of the things I was being about, and I meant with the select board, is that they understand that the ATV problem, and I know from talking to Lieutenant Lamah from their experiences up there, it's not a policing problem. It's a community problem, and it will take the entire community to address that issue. And that's going to include some education in the schools, some prevention, working with the business partners in the community who are allowing these people to come flying in there on ATVs, illegal vehicles, and gassing them up and being happy to take their money. And I know that the town has gone to a lot of trouble to adopt ordinances to address those issues, made it perfectly clear that we have a policy that prohibits pursuing ATVs, and we won't deflate tires on an ATV. All lessons learned from things that have actually happened. So we're not doing that. On the other hand, they are prepared, according to them, to identify the people who are the violators, and they're asking for some follow-up help. And I think that's pretty reasonable. I'm more than willing to send an officer to somebody's house to talk with their parents and explain the law, the whys and the what for's about illegal vehicles, unlawful vehicles. I've also spoken with the state's attorney about it, Jim Hughes. He's fully supportive of this. And we talked about the ATV problem, and he agrees with our philosophy.
And we're thinking that we could be in Highgate 24/7, 365? We could be there at 2:00 a.m.? We could be there at 2:00 p.m., right?
Yeah, you know, the idea of being high in law enforcement is to create kind of an omnipresence, if you will. You have to mix it up enough so that people can't figure out what your regimen is. At the same time, of course, we're managing people. We want to work shifts and have a life at home, too. So it's a balancing act. But I traditionally refer to it as an invisible presence. You try to create an invisible presence, so people never know for sure if you're there or if you're not there. But when we're there, and I'm certain Lieutenant would back me up on this, we are going to enforce the law. And we're not going to kowtow about that. At the same time, I'm not looking to go in there and put a bunch of jagbooted thugs on the ground up there to intimidate people. That isn't the plan.
Which alludes to my last question. I know here we do a lot of community policing. There it's really rural. Are we going to try to take our mold that we have there and kind of incorporate it there in that community?
I think we are, and I think they're interested in that. They're interested in everything that we have. They're working with a small budget, but essentially, they would be interested in whatever it is we have. They're also willing to expand that if they find that what they're purchasing means more to them, has greater value to them.
Thank you, sir. So I'm curious, when you issue tickets, who receives that money?
Depends on how the ticket's written. There are certain violations that the money always goes to the state. There are some violations where the money is divided or split up, and the community gets some of it. So for speeding offenses, for example, if you write that under a state violation for a municipal speeding, then all but a handling fee and a cert charge for the police academy goes to the community. It's not huge money. I think, I would have to look, but I would tell you that probably the town of St. Albans gives $23,000 a year in traffic ticket money. Truck tickets, all of it, except for the processing fee, which we've not emphasized a lot in the past, but recently because of some issues that we've had and we haven't, those are big tickets. And that money goes to the community. So if you write ordinance tickets, that money goes to the community. But of course, it's a whole different system for enforcement and prosecution of those tickets.
Can we backtrack to your staffing conversation? Where are you maxing out? I know you have part-time and full-time, but...
So I have three SROs coming out of the schools, and part of the arrangement with the SROs is they're mine until school starts again. They work the road. So we have three coming out of the schools. I have an officer who was deployed to Iraq for nearly a year, comes back on staff, and is full-time certified officer on July 1st. We just had a graduate from, in the last Vermont Police Academy class, who'll be back in a cruiser in St. Albans, I believe, next week. I just hired an officer from Caledonia County, who's full-time certified, who started today, who'll probably be on his own in four weeks. I have an interview tomorrow. An officer from the Southern Police Department in Vermont, who was relocating to Northern Vermont. Again, those are pretty quick turnovers because they don't have to go to the county. So I would tell you that we're in good shape going into the summer. We're also, of course, anticipating that some of these people will be trained as we move into the fall. We'll be able to step up as we put the SROs back in the schools.
Did that answer your question? Because I thought the question was, where are you at when you're at full staff?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. Okay, so 27.
So you have 27 now. Does that mean you're fully staffed? Or you...
No, because I've got two part-time officers. And to be honest with you, you have to hedge back just a little bit. That's a lot of new people. So I'd be okay, and I think Manager, I spoke about this, about maybe over-hiring by one, just to make sure because it's unlikely that they will all make it through this process. But the idea would be to be 27 full-time sworn officers. And the reason for that is, we were at 24, and we added two street crimes officers and another SRO, which came up near the end of the school year. And we're being asked to consider the idea of adding another SRO in the fall. So we would have four SROs.
And SROs, they're paid for by the school?
Yeah, so... Because this council asked me to a few years ago. We used to do it based on a percentage. We did this 10/12 thing. And the problem is, it really doesn't account for the cost because of management. And we hang on to cars, even though they're older and have higher mileage. Part of the deterrent effect is the cruiser at the school. So now they pay us a flat rate, $82,000 a year per school. And that covers the real expenses of managing a SRO program.
I have one other thing after we...
Any public comment on this?
Make a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kate.
No, I'm sorry. I just wanted to reiterate, you said you have capacity, and this agreement would not take officers from the street here in St. Albans and move them. You know, we wouldn't be losing coverage.
Well, obviously, officers will work here. We'd be assigned up there.
Right, but...
But no, we would lose... I, without publicly stating, because I don't want to compromise safety, there are a minimum number of officers that we always have on duty in the city and the town. And what we're talking about is, we have an override shift, if you will, a 12-hour override shift. And we'd be looking at using six hours of that override shift four days a week. But we'd still have that same officer back on the road here for the other six hours a day.
Make a motion to approve the inter-ministerial police agreement between the city of St. Albans and the town of Highgate. Seconded by Chad. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
So Chief, I just have one other comment before you get up and leave, if you may. I know in the past I've had issues with my interaction with dispatch. I guess I'm a frequent flyer, commenter, or whatever. The last couple times I've been into the police station, I want to let everyone know, I've been greeted very warmly, been very, very pleased with the service at the window. So kudos to getting that turned around.
Thank you. We've done some customer service training. If you stop in now, you'll also notice that we fixed up the lobby a little bit, so it looks a little better. And we do have an antiquated phone system that has a collective bank of number of calls that can go into it. And if officers don't clear their calls out, it will lock the system up. So I could literally pick up the phone on a Monday morning and have nothing. And on Wednesday, I might pick up the phone and have six messages, and four of them are from four days ago. So that's something we'll have to address in the future. But the way that we're trying to deal with that is, the manager, the city manager and I recently have implemented a OIC officer in charge has a phone in his possession. And dispatchers are being told that when people call and ask for the chief, you don't say, "He's off till the weekend." You ask them if there's something you can help them with. And if you can't help them, you refer to the supervisor, the OIC, to see if they can help. I would tell you this. There are like 42 employees in the police department, county dispatchers, parking, all that. I wish I could speak for every one of them every time they say anything, but obviously, I can't. And every now and then, something gets said or done that you have no choice but to lay on your sword for and apologize. And sometimes you don't even realize it because people don't mention it to you until it's faster to become a bigger subject or a bigger source of irritation than it should have. But it's not my intention, never has been my intention, that anybody should feel like they're not getting the assistance they should be getting from the police department.
It's just been, the last couple times, it's been really bad.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that, that we're trying to turn it around.
I think that'd be my tenth picture of Chad you put on the inside of the window. Probably paid dividends when he walked in.
A lot of dirt holes, isn't it?
There's a picture of him with a Santa Claus outfit on, a coat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Well, I guess I'm curious.
I was just, I was looking for that. I go all the select organs I can. I haven't been here in about a year. So I was just, even though we don't cover the city, because they do such a great job. No, I was just stopping in. I was coming through and stopped in. I had no idea that the chief was on the agenda tonight, but just stopping in to see what's going on in St. Albans City, that's all.
Let's move on to wastewater and stormwater budgets.
Tom and Chip, if you have one of your own, if you have a question.
Mentioned in the packet in the cover sheet, on the summary sheet, the top chart has the water and wastewater rates combined and divided between sample users. On the bottom chart, the rate is broken out from water and sewer per 100-gallon basis. Stormwaters include separately, based on the ERU system, of 3,000 square feet of impaired public surface. The average water and wastewater user in this budget, we see their combined bill increase by just under 4%. $12.07 per quarter. Stormwater equivalent residential unit fee is proposed to increase by 75 cents per quarter. That brings it to $8.25 per quarter, per ERU. The action in this budget is really on the stormwater side and on the wastewater side. The stormwater budget proposed on the top of the First Flow Reduction Project is required under our MS4 designation. Chip can talk about that a little bit in a minute. The project is located at the end of the Interstate Access Road and is estimated to cost $750,000. We anticipate 50% funding from the state, and we're proposing to borrow the balance beginning in FY '20. The budget also contains $47,000 to design the next stormwater project coming up in future years. What you see in the stormwater budget is there's... We script those budgets pretty carefully to really place the emphasis on the capital projects as required under the MS4 and make sure that we aren't sending resources to administration or overheads. Really heavily weighted towards projects. On the wastewater, excuse me, on the wastewater side, the increase is driven, once again, by the funds needed for the debt service on the upgrade. This shows us $300,000 on line 83 in the CIP and also $333,000 on line 116 over in the debt service cost center. This is this year, and then one more year after this is the last increase before the upgrade is completed. After that, we can be back in line, I believe, with inflationary increases, more like a water fund, you see. The water fund is very stable with a 2.4 increase proposed. Other priorities of the council remain in effect, such as the stabilization fund and preserving the allocation fees and having a strong CIP. With that, I'll ask Chip to describe the two projects that we're gearing up for and ask Tom to highlight anything that he would like to... Chip?
Oh, yeah, on the stormwater side, our first-ever treatment project that we started planning is located because it's on existing city land that we own because of the anticipation of a connector road for the Federal Street Corridor project. So it was an easy one to tackle first. We're in the final design phase right now. It would treat stormwater from about, I believe, 21 acres around the area of the St. Albans State Highway and SATEC, that area of South Main Street. And it would be what we call a gravel wetland, which is sort of what you used to see detention ponds that just had water in them in the past, and now it's more of a constructed system of meanders and weirs for the water to flow through during a storm. And the way it's constructed will slow things down before the water hits the brooks, but also will remove some phosphorus as well and help us fulfill many of the water quality requirements that we're facing under our MS4 permit. So as we get closer to anticipating actually building this project, we're putting in the construction estimate of $750,000. You know, as Tom said, we anticipate 50, at least 50% of that would be grants from the state, the federal government, and the rest would have to take on debt. So we put in some more capital costs and debt costs as we get prepared for building our first-ever treatment facility. The next one we have our sights on for final design that would be funded in part... The next one we have our sights on for final design that would be funded in part by the stormwater utility is a project that is on land the city owns along Lemna Drive. But as a bonus, we actually have some money from a federal bill to also pursue another project on Lower Weldon Street that so far would not need any stormwater utility funds at all. So we're moving forward with what we said we'd do for water quality, building the treatment facilities.
Tom, anything you have on budgets?
Sure. A few minutes.
Can I ask you a question, Chip, first? Don? Chip, I just want to make sure I'm giving some facts straight. St. Albans City is specially designated as an MS4 district, correct? And any project that lies within the city of St. Albans that was... Had a prior stormwater permit could come under our MS4 designation?
Correct.
And if we were to assume the responsibility of a project, of an existing stormwater project, and enhance that or make it work better, or take one that's not working properly and make it work, does that count?
Yes. Anytime we improve something, we can get credit for it through the state. We'd have to go through a process to have it all certified. We ended up taking over three expired stormwater permits because they largely drained city streets. They were all subdivisions at one point, and then they had to get a stormwater permit, and then the city took over the street once everything was done.
Yeah.
There are other expired stormwater permits that are actually on our lists in our flow reduction plans for someday pursuing making improvements to those stormwater systems, and we would get credit for that. But basically, any project that involves having to get access to land the city doesn't own, we set those aside as something to work towards, and we've done the final design on those projects where that psych control issue isn't really an issue.
So we have a list in the city of every stormwater permit that's within the city boundary?
Yes, we do.
And we're actively engaging the people, those stormwater permies, as to whether or not they want to come under our permit or not?
No, not... Not... We have not actively engaged anyone recently on whether or not they want to be subsumed under the MS4. It's always an option, open to us, though.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to do that?
I think it's a matter of us being ready to take on the obligations of maintenance and everything else that comes with just taking something over all the liabilities. There are some cases where, you know, the current permit holder probably doesn't... Would probably like things to stay the same unless we are ready to come with them with a plan for improvements and taking things off of their hands. All of these things are certainly possibilities and probably things that we're eventually going to do. We're getting... We're sort of getting started in the process, and project by project, we're going to be moving this forward. And some of the things you're talking about on our list of things to do as we go forward on the MS4.
And the reason I'm asking this, because I know a lot of permies that are facing what they're going to think is an expensive task to do whatever they have to do to get issued another permit.
True.
And so my recommendation has been, and others have been, to approach the city to see if you can come under their permit. Is that a proper thing to be doing?
Oh, yeah. We welcome those conversations.
Okay.
You know, I think that, like, in the process we're in right now, there are always going to be budgetary constraints on what we can do. It's going to take some planning and getting to know a system and figuring out what we can do and how much it's going to cost. But if it makes sense for our MS4, and if we can get credit, and it can help us clean up the streams in the bay, then we're going to... We'll pursue these things.
Okay. Thanks. I just want to make sure I had that.
The sweet spot is where something is somebody's private property owner's stormwater obligation that's just treating their land, and we can take it and expand it to do more with it. That's the home run.
In the real estate profession, this is a big problem for a lot of landowners with these stormwater permits that are now expired. And since they are going into waters that are...
Impaired.
Impaired, they're facing high costs to make those yields low and acceptable for the state of Vermont. I don't think they quite know what those standards are yet. And so one of the things that a lot of the attorneys and the people in the real estate business are saying is to approach municipalities, so St. Albans Town is one, St. Albans City is one, and see if they're willing to take on. And I don't... Sometimes I feel that they think that the town and the city's going to want to say, "No," because we're afraid of that, but I don't think we are. I think that works for us because we can do something.
If we knew... I'm unaware of anyone who's in dire straits. If we knew someone was, we would talk to them.
The wrinkle is people that are also impacted by the three-acre rule. There's some that seem differently situated.
So I would just caution us to the cost of taking over some of those and maintaining them in court. I guess I think that we would need to really scrutinize what that is before we commit to...
But the cost of doing it could be more than worth the end result for us.
I get that. I'm just saying that let's not lose track of the cost.
Yeah.
It's a case by case.
I think one of the ones we did take over was Guy's Circle, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any plans to do anything in that area?
We're basically maintaining the system as it is and dealing with any problems that come up. I don't know if that one's slated for our ability to treat any more land. So that's basically one we'll just maintain. Same thing with Murray Drive, and there's a system on part of Lemna Drive that we've also taken over. And the one we're going to look at final design for next is would be an expansion of a different area of Lemna Drive.
Where's the land that we own on Lemna Drive?
We own... We own the street, and actually, we own a lot of right-of-way, right up to the railroad right-of-way on the west side.
Just one question. You talked about... I guess I haven't heard much about the Federal Street bypass coming down off the access road. Is that still something that's in the works, or is that something that's gone by the wayside? Because you had mentioned utilizing some of that land, right?
So being done in a way that wouldn't preclude the bypass from coming in. It's just the cost of it, you know? The project is shell-ready, it's fully permitted, we're through NEPA, we're locked and loaded. But the latest estimates for the whole thing are sixteen?
Twelve to fourteen million, yeah.
It's that much?
Yeah.
And we'd have to match a portion of that.
So just to protect us, I guess, so your... The projects you're proposing are not... Would not impact that if they ever... If it were to ever happen.
Right. Right. I mean, we're not going to wake up ten years from now, earmarks are back, and we've got a pond where we wanted to build it.
Right. Okay, so let's move to the budget portion on the top. I guess that's your...
Sure. Just a few things to highlight. In both water and wastewater in the CIP, there's five thousand dollars for Stettens Street Engineering and five thousand dollars for Kingman. A few months back, Chip and I met with the state about clean water funding, and we were pleasantly surprised to learn that there's... Despite what we've gotten for the wastewater plant, there's substantial funding available, and they prefer just to apply. And so we're on the priority list for a number of projects. So these small five-thousand-dollar allotments are grant matching funds, and the hope and the plan is that when it's time to do the projects, that'll be matched with a combination of grants and loans for the actual construction piece. So that should help us down the road. In water, for several years now, we've benefited. There have been some federal funds that have reduced our debt service. I don't know, the USDA project, and that goes away. So that's about forty percent of the total increase. It's just the loss of some federal funds that hit this year. We've benefited the last few years. In wastewater, I just want to point out, Tim asked, line sixty-seven, I believe... Sorry, sixty-six is the Water Center Association, that's ten thousand dollars for the weed harvester, as we've done for the last few years. And in wastewater, the initial plan four or five years ago was five years of five percent increases to deal with the upgrade. Because we've gotten so much funding along the way, the net impact will still be about twenty-five percent. It's just spread out really over seven or eight years now. And the final piece of it, the federal loan, when we're finished with the project and the federal engineer signs off on it, we've got short-term debt to cover the cost, the federal piece, and the feds will reimburse us in full, and we won't start actually paying down that loan for two years post-construction. So we're well-positioned to wrap this up, projects within budget, within contingency, and hopefully reach the final budget conclusion next year.
Can... In the end, in aggregate, do you... What portion of that was covered with the USDA grant fund as opposed to the debt service?
So the eighteen-million-dollar project, we've got a state pollution control grant for one-point-three, and then another half-million dollars in loan forgiveness, which is essentially a grant. And then along the way, and this predates me, the state loan, which has been paid in full, that started out as a planning loan, I think in 2013, for, you know, five or ten thousand dollars. And, you know, we're on, you know, version thirteen right now for eight million dollars. But it's... You know, I mentioned Kingman earlier and Stettens. That's how the funding works. You get on their priority list, you do the engineering, and then they fund your capital project, and they work with you the whole way through. So we're in the pipeline here.
We went over this in the budget meeting, but can you go over it with the council about the new equipment that we're buying and the new philosophy about equipment?
Sure. There's some appropriations for tools. If you look at the garage today compared to a few months back after Rob Green has taken over, it's meticulously organized, and I think that brings all sorts of operational efficiencies, which are really obvious. And Rob has said he needs some money, not a huge amount of money, but he needs some money for tools. So we've thrown that in there, and it's not all the money in the world. There's five thousand in water and five thousand in wastewater, when historically there might be a thousand or fifteen hundred. But it's part of his approach and a years of experience and a better methodology towards getting everyone geared up appropriately, solving the problems faster. You know, he brings his military background, and, you know, the idea is at 2:00 AM when something breaks, you're not searching around for it, you know exactly where it is, and it's obvious.
Ten thousand dollars in tools is not a lot.
No, we have major equipment. Yeah, we have equipment, too.
We also have some... Three new pieces of equipment, the payloader, the utility truck, which is almost every year, and the new backhoe. I'm amazed at how many hours you put on our equipment, but they're... You know, Marty can tell you, they're used all the time. So this is... It's in the CIP, and I expect we'll see more of it in the coming years. You know, the... Every year, the utility trucks are more or less standard. You occasionally skip a year, or you might pivot mid-year and decide on something like pickup trucks. But we always have a backhoe in good condition because we just put a ton of hours on it. The payloader is slightly new, and Marty can comment on that. And that's also in the general fund, both general fund water and wastewater is put across the funds.
And our biggest driver was the chemicals, right?
Always the chemicals, generally weather-driven. The numbers in there are consistent with the high-mother work, which occurred in 2015 for both water and wastewater. So we think that's pretty safe and healthy. And then the other piece is, in general, for wastewater, it's really going to take getting through the FY20 budget to get a better handle on any operational efficiencies and cost savings we'll have from the new plan. There will be some, we're confident of that, but budgeting for it before the plan's completed is just not wise at this point, I don't think.
And what's our TMEO supposed to be projected? It has to be under two, right?
It's not a question for the budget guy.
Point the permit for the wastewater.
Yeah, the permit has to be under two now.
Forget if it's point two E, point two-five, or two E. Do you know, Marty?
I think it's...
I think it's just under two. It's like one point nine-five or something.
That's worse, Marty.
The target. Do you have any bonds being affected from this? Is that showing on us?
In water and wastewater, nothing in the short term.
And just to reiterate what you said, Don, one more year of substantial increase, and we're back to pushing... Yeah.
Back to what?
Back to where we would normally look at it year-to-year in placing areas, so.
I mean, to that point, not that it's a big deal, but the stormwater being jumped twenty... I mean, I get it's only a dollar fifty, but I hate to get in the habit of that jumping every year, I guess. I think, you know, if we're going to... Once again, I get it's nine dollars, but I hate to see that get up to thirty or thirty-five sort of quickly.
We... Yeah, that's good to know. And the challenge is...
Not knowing what we're doing.
I mean, we've got twenty years to fix the streams. And the... I think some of the impacts... Some of the way to cushion the impact is to deal with and try to get as much state money as possible. And the best way to do that, this is a broader conversation, is to position ourselves as the regional provider within the new model that the legislature just adopted. The other thing that's out there that affects both the stormwater and the wastewater conversation is dealing with the CSO unoverwhelming, not the overflow at the plant, but the CSO there. So we don't have that... We don't have enough information yet to deal with that project, and we need to finish this first.
I mean, hindsight, I think maybe we should have just dealt it up from the get-go.
Stormwater? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, stormwater.
Yeah. Start it higher, is what you mean?
If we're going to... If we're going to mainly increase it on a yearly basis.
Yeah.
Should have just... We should have just started at fifteen or twenty bucks.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it can be every other year, you know?
And I get... Once again, I agree, it's minor, I get it, but I think perception is that things are always increasing.
I mean, that's probably... Of all of them, that's probably the one that's positioned on a percentage basis to grow the most.
Right. Obviously.
I think we... Just to add, that we... All of the municipalities who have the kind of infrastructure that we have have faced an enormous amount of public criticism, and we're really proud of our community in building that capacity to fund the projects that we need to fund, to do what we need to do to improve water quality. And I think, you know, when I talk to people, the number-one thing that people are willing to invest in is clean water. And I hope that we'll, you know, be able to do that in a way that doesn't feel to people like we're being too aggressive financially, but that we're meeting our obligations and that we're actually making progress, sort of balance.
And finding a way to lump those two things for people, because people tend to see their bills in isolation and not necessarily equate it with, you know, improvements to water quality. And that's just a move to talk with people about.
Any other questions for Chip or Tom?
Is there a motion to approve these budgets?
Second.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Do you want to do separate or in total?
Just do them separate.
Make a motion to approve the wastewater budget, two thousand twenty.
Same with Chad. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No objection, motion passes.
Motion to approve the water budget, two thousand twenty.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion to approve the stormwater budget.
Second. Second by Chad. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. I don't remember. Jim, you still with us?
All the yellow ones are on.
I can't.
Sorry, Jim.
Is that the problem?
Jim, if you're watching, we're sorry.
Can we hold that?
Uh, what's the number?
Three on a.
One second, it's still...
Voting out.
Yeah.
I got him here.
Yeah, I lost you.
Yeah, we're back now. That was the mayor's fault. No, I'm going to pass you over to him.
Mayor did it eventually. We had it down as voting yes on all of that, Jim, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
That's red garbage cans, they'll only be out two hours in the day. And Cassell only.
Sorry about that, Jim. All right, we're moving on to number 13, which is review of goals and objectives. This is, this is something I'd asked Dom to include. I think we went back in November to set that list of priorities. I just wanted to, maybe Dom, I don't want to take a lot of time on it, but two things I'd like to see is, maybe just give us a quick overview, and then I'd like to go around the table and just ask each councilperson what their priority of that list would be moving forward. I mean, the summer's an active time and getting things done and trying to get things done. So just to give a feel for what people are hearing on the street and what those concerns might be, or what those projects might be moving forward.
Sure.
Before snow flies again, so.
No, it's very helpful. I've been reviewing the list. But, you know, many of them are ongoing, many of them are in progress. But it would be helpful to get some prioritization from the council. We're a little more than halfway through the year, so this is a good time to reengage with the list. But also, I think it illustrates the amount of staff time to come into the progress, the projects across the street and managing the response to the Augers report. We've kind of been dealing with a lot of time-pressing projects and not able to focus on some of the more strategic initiatives that are captured in this report.
Does anyone have any pressing topics that we'd like to see moved forward? I think probably one of the bigger complaints that we hear is noise.
Noise, speed.
Speed's been one. I did have a conversation with Chief Taylor regarding noise. And it basically comes down to how much time you invest in chasing motorcycles or trucks or cars versus public safety. I think there's a discussion that we can continue to have and move forward, but, you know, the noise on Main Street is, can be deafening. I was, I was in a park last Saturday, and it seems like the motorcycle just chose to rattle between Lake Street and Kingman, right where you have people on the street. And I don't have a solution for it, but I know it's a quality-of-life issue that we hear about quite often.
I know a few years ago, we had a lot of issues with trucks with modified exhausts blowing black smoke, and that seems to have fixed itself somewhat by, I think it pretty much went after the inspection sites, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's the automated vehicle inspection program. And now that you can't just go to a mechanic and have a paper thin fill out that every single vehicle gets the full inspection and all the pictures and everything, there's no skirting it with an illegal stack you've got to have.
So is there a similar thing with motorcycles? Is that how the inspection works with motorcycles?
No, that's an interesting question.
So I'm wondering if we hold the people that inspect these motorcycles to the same standards, if we can. I don't know if we can.
Is the motorcycle's noise due to modifications?
Oh, yeah.
Or is it bought that way?
What's that?
Most of them are not.
Partly they're not allowed, no.
Uh, most are. They're loud, but they're not, they're not obnoxious at loud. You can tell when you, when one goes by that has not been modified, it's much quieter.
Mike and I were part of an email with one of your constituents regarding, maybe the police measure may not be the best way to go and misuse some money before trying to focus on an education plan, either on the website or Facebook page, and trying to get the word out that way.
Yeah, so, you know, I was talking to, the most important constituent is my wife Stephanie, and she is...
That's out the gaze of my eyes.
She, she's home a little bit more lately as she's working on her masters and has just seen a lot of people speeding and driving through and hearing a lot of noise. And it's that thing of like, when you're home and you're not working during the day, you suddenly realize like how much of that traffic activity is impacting the neighborhood. And so I'll circulate this with you, but she mocked up like a campaign for the speeding piece of it. But I'm wondering if we need to maybe think about adopting, you know, a campaign through the summer of, you know, her slogan was "Take it easy", you know, "Slow down" in neighborhoods. But I think there's the thing about noise too, that it's, that it's the combination of the two things. And it really is, and we were talking about ATVs and how it's, the chief was saying how it's cultural. Well, I think that both the vehicle noise and the speeding is really cultural. I don't know that we'll ever be able to police our way out of it, but I think that, you know, if we put some lawn signs up for a little bit in the neighborhood, if we increase some of the police patrols in the targeted way, or at least make a public statement about the speeding through the neighborhoods and the noise out on Main Street in the neighborhoods, it would go a long way to at least have people have conversations with their family in their homes, in the neighborhood, at the community gatherings that we had about the traffic issues. Because I know we're not alone. Every time I read the messenger in Highgate and Twon, we're all facing these kinds of issues with loud and speedy vehicles. I think it's time for us to, if I was going to say one thing would be the priority, it would be that change in the culture around vehicles and running stop signs, speeding, being really loud.
And the only other thing I kind of want to have a more of a, you know, what's kind of one of the issues, but one I'd like to deal with that's more on the positive noise, continue to try to find a way to do some kind of appreciation for volunteers that we have in the community, not just on boards, but there's a lot of folks that volunteer a lot of time doing other things in this community, whether it be church, or coaching, or something, some way that we can recognize a few of those folks every year. Similar to what Rotary does for their Person of the Year. You know, just having five people that we recognize. And we can put up a little profile for them on the website, on the Facebook page, or whatever, just to say thank you. I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's a big push. Right away, yeah.
The noise has, really for me, has been the big issue in these complaints. And how do these vehicles with these modified tailpipes pass inspection? I mean, I don't, I don't understand that, I guess. They put those blasters on the, on the exhaust and they just, it's horrible. Well, we had somebody go by wearing this media. It totally wiped out any sound in there. So I don't know. I mean, we watch it night after night, sitting either in the backyard or on the porch and just flying by and coming around the corner and speeding and loud. And it's just, it's just really annoying.
Speed it.
We won't even go there. Not my neighborhood. So I don't know. I have thought about putting a sign on the front lawn, "Slow down". I know there's somebody that put a children at play, little mannequin on their front lawn, Spruce Street, and I've seen him in other neighborhoods too.
Signs that say, "Drive, like your child lives here"?
Yeah.
There's a campaign, there was a, someone came back, they'd gone up to Maine, and the whole community did that campaign. And she said, everywhere were those signs, and that's what made the statement is, "We're in this together, we're not going to take it." It wasn't like one year there, it was like, she said, everybody had one in the front lawn.
But does it work, or do they just find that they do it work?
I don't know. She was just, she was just passing through, so, yeah. I don't know, we just have to ask.
And I think it might be worth a try to print up some lawn signs, and we could use the Main Street banners as well.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, the, you find yourselves, is it the Eagles? I'm not sure it's the Eagles.
"Take it easy" is, it's Jackson Brown wrote by the Eagle, it was a hit for the Eagles.
Slow down, that's "Take it easy".
No, not "That's a no". But "Slow ride" would be good too. We'll come up with a whole Spotify playlist for a campaign.
That's actually a good idea.
In terms of slow downs.
What do you do with that money?
The singing lessons?
Yeah, your money, your mother gave you singing lessons.
"Slow ride", is that the song I was singing?
Yeah, "Take it easy" is an Eagles song.
How would you, how would you market it on that, Dom, leave it up to you and Marty or?
Yeah, we can run with that. I might look for some editorial and put on, before we bring the hundred of them.
My neighbor also has these little, like, inch cones that he has for soccer, and he just physically screws little pieces of wood, and he puts those out. That slows people down. It's just amazing. He just puts them right on the edge of the road. And that slows people down for some reason.
That was one of them. They used to have the pedestrian crossing that they pulled from here and put it in their own, I think they'll have an impact as well. But you need someone to take them in and out on a daily basis, so. And maybe work a while. Okay.
The city pool is one that comes right to our mind. I know that we've gotten it open for this season, which is great, but I just think the department as a whole and the pool are just huge community resources. And we have got to figure out a long-term solution for that. I know it's going to take a while, and I don't know what it is, but I don't want us to lose sight of it. I don't want there to come a year where we can't open pool.
Unless it's under construction.
Somebody outside have some emails to send out to the council, but that almost happened this year.
I, yeah.
I don't know if you heard that, but we had a big problem with the training, and we were able to get back on track and get it open. Kelly and I, in the wake of that, been meeting pretty regularly on it. So we've, we've got some thoughts. We are making some progress about a site. You know, I think our, the discussion seems to be focusing more on the existing site than the other two. And we've been able to get in contact with a firm that can do, has some experience in the construction and the estimating. They're a pool company, they're not an engineering firm. And we think that'll give us better, better planning and better estimates, which will help us be able to come to the council with a proposal.
Michael?
Yeah, I guess we hit that off on a tangent, but my big one is definitely around the public safety issues with traffic. I'll second the keeping the pool open. But yeah, these are, I think as part of that, the exploration of a citywide 25 mile an hour speed limit, I know is something that is still swirling. I think that's a related and important piece for us to think about.
Noise, PSO on the distressed properties. Although I did think about that the other day because I'm just trying to grow some grass on the front lawn because I think I was pushing the salt into it with the snow this winter, and it's got a lot of dead spots, so I was letting the lawn grow. And so I was thinking about it, said, "Someone, I'm not going to come and mow my lawn", so I broke down and mowed it. The front lawn, the front of the back lawn's always, is always mowed. But I was, I was trying to keep off it, but I didn't. But anyway...
We'll take you off that list.
Okay. But definitely, my wife and I almost got hit by a car crossing the crosswalk here a couple nights ago going to Aladdin at the Walden Theater. Car was going up Congress Street, and there was one waiting for us, traveling north. And a car went, red, red sportage-type of car, sped around the one that was going up Congress Street with the direction like going up Congress Street, and he very close to hitting us. I was probably the closest I've ever been in my life getting hit by a car like that. And so the crosswalk, definitely, because I've always said that before, not just that time, but I think some, some crosswalk maintenance, more of the signs being put out, you know, pedestrian walkway, or lighting them up when they work. But the noise and that, I think.
Jim, are you hearing everything okay?
Yeah, have you, have you, Mommy, this line, I'm good.
So you're out, you're out?
Yeah, I, I, I've been up to some crosswalks, and still would like to see those crosswalks. But at that same time, maybe another one or two crosswalks. One that's going to come to mind after the construction of your building is potentially wanting to try to see how that crosses over to Carter, Congress, and Maine. I'd like to see those, I think, I think they work, I think they're safer, and I think we should have them.
Marty, I had noticed, but what's a, is there a painting to be happening this summer for crosswalks?
In the next couple of weeks, we'll be outpainting crosswalks and all the crosswalks.
Are we doing, has there been anything, just any discussions about anything other than just white? Is there a...
We can do 3D. You've seen those out there.
I've seen those.
White is the typical color.
Right.
We could do, we've talked about doing plantings, you know, planters down around the island on Lake Street on that crosswalk, just to try to slow traffic down. We've got a request for another one now that far is out on South Main. There's a lot of walkers going down into the industrial park. We've had a request from a resident down in that area to put one down there, and there's not one, I don't believe, beyond Satek for that entire section, so.
I've had a request on Elm and Lake, going from Holy Angels Church over to, to the south side of Lake Street as well.
So there is one there on the, on the upper side of Elm.
But I think they were also looking for some signage, not just a crosswalk or nothing. I guess mine would be just, I've talked to Marty, the sidewalk in Taylor Park is going to be torn up, right, Marty, the, whatever, it's parallel to the...
On the west side, from Crystal to Bank. Is that a complete product failure? Is that what that is? I think so. It was just the environment. You know, it was the initial try for that product, and it just plugged up with sand. There's still drainage under there that we'll preserve, but we'll just put the p-stone in there for now until we figure out a permanent plan for the park.
The other one I had, I talked to Marty about, is there's limited lighting in Taylor Park. I think we have three pool lights working out, pretty much nothing on the south end, nothing on the north end, except for the large light on the bandstand, and then nothing on the south end as well. So it'd be nice if we can get that up and running before two parts of...
So the ones on the north end, I take are all photocells that Tommy has ordered to replace. The ones on the south end are wiring issues that we're going to rewire, do it temporary. The ones on the south end are wiring issues that we're gonna rewire, do it temporary.
Do you want to add to that to the list of?
What'd you say before Taylor Park lights?
The sidewalk.
Yeah, the Taylor Park sidewalk?
Yeah. Okay, anything else after that, anyone? Jim, you're set? Can we lose you, Jim? Your phone dying?
I don't know.
Are you on mute? You with us, Jim? Jim? What's going on?
I had to go to the bathroom.
Tom, don't write that. Okay, let's move on to, um, 14, uh, consider approval of Congress and Maine development documents. So Dom, why don't I turn this over to you?
Uh, series of documents in your packet, uh, I'll try to briefly describe them as we go through it. First thing I'd ask you to approve is the sources and uses table, which outlines the various funding sources in the project.
Everyone has that copy before you, kind of case of that kind of, on your back, Jim?
Yeah. Just one new segment tomorrow without these coming.
Okay. So we're looking at the sources and uses of funds, um, looking for discussion right now, if there's any questions or comments on that. If there's none, I would entertain a motion to accept this as presented.
I move.
Jim, Jim, who was Tim seconded? Was it Tim?
It was me, Mike.
Mike seconded it, seconded it, it, it. Any other comments or questions for Dom? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes. We're moving on to the purchase and sale agreement. Dom, if you want to touch on that?
Purchase and sale agreement outlines the, uh, terms under which we will sell the land to Congress and Maine to build the commercial building on the corner. Conditions precedent to closing that, uh, on our side is, um, the demo, the site work, the utility work and environmental remediation, uh, has to be completed. Uh, on the developer's side, they need to have a construction contract, uh, for construction of the commercial unit, uh, they need to have close on their financing and reimburse us, uh, for their share of the engineering and design costs.
Everyone has a chance to review it. Are there any questions or comments for Dom? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement for, uh, the Main Street project.
I move that we approve the purchase and sale agreement for the Congress and Maine project.
Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Kate. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. We're moving on to the rent deficiency agreement.
Uh, this is the agreement, uh, to backstop the rents on the first floor, uh, which allows, uh, the stability for the project to attract the private, uh, investors. Uh, the guarantee that the city has agreed to is eight dollars per square foot of base rent. Uh, the rent is anticipated to be, uh, 12 years, and we take a, excuse me, $12 per square foot, and we take a look at the whole year and, um, evaluating our obligations.
On a yearly basis?
On a yearly basis.
So we have, uh, a vote for a motion to approve the rent deficiency make-up agreement?
Move that we approve the rent deficiency make-up, rent deficiency make-up agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Kate. Anyone have any questions or comments for Dom? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next item is a parking agreement. We'll start with, uh, the CCD one first.
Yep, the, this is the agreement between the city and the Community College of Vermont, which, uh, allows them to relocate their operations downtown. Um, as you know, um, we've agreed to provide, uh, 20 parking spaces on site. As part of that agreement, uh, there's, uh, damages the city pays if they're unable to access those. That's augmented with 55 spaces, uh, for the students in the parking garage, uh, and that's it.
20 spaces are for the staff and?
20 spaces are for staff and faculty when they're there on official business.
Any questions for Dom? Any, any motion to accept the parking agreement with CCD?
I move that we approve the parking agreement with CCD.
Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Kate. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes for the parking agreement with CCD. We will now look at the parking agreement for Congress and Maine LLC.
This is the companion to the CCD agreement. This one is directly with Congress and Maine. Uh, it provides, uh, similarly, um, that will make the, um, spaces available in the parking garage, provides a, uh, option on those spaces, uh, at the termination of the lease with CCD, to the Congress and Maine, the building owner, uh, and also grants the, the right to use up to five parking spaces, in a parking lot, uh, uh, within 500 feet of the commercial building.
Any questions for Dom?
That's the municipal parking lot, not your parking lot.
Our parking lot.
I just wanted to make sure that I get parked over the east or something.
No, no.
And if the motion books up the parking agreement with Main Street LLC?
I move that we approve the parking agreement with Congress and Maine LLC.
Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Kate. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes for accept, uh, to authorize the parking agreement. Next one on the list is the police station lease. That's in front of him.
This is the lease, uh, for the current CCD, future police station. It's a 15-year lease, that tracks the same term that the CCD leases for across the street. Uh, it's got, uh, base rent of, uh, 20 bucks a square foot, or, uh, 200,000 a year. Beyond that, the city will, uh, operate the building as if we own it. So, uh, we will arrange for the snow plowing and pay the electric bill, uh, janitorial, all that directly. Uh, we are paying the taxes on the buil, on the building, um, which is part of what makes the TIF, fundably available for the projects across the street.
Was I correct i- in hearing the, that, or understanding that the, this is 100% new increment, because as it stands now, it's not a taxable.
Correct.
It's a CCD.
Which is why we chose to pay taxes, because it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Dom? Hearing none, entertain a motion to, uh, approve the signing of the lease agreement with, um, Congress and Maine LLC.
I move that we approve the signing of the lease agreements with Congress and Maine LLC.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Kate. Seconded by Kate, um, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 No opposition, no opposition, so the motion, uh, passes regarding approval of the police station lease. The next one we had is a condominium declaration.
Uh, this is a, uh, technical document that follows the process and components outlined in state law for declaring a condominium. Uh, it's in, uh, draft format, um, as the Declaration of Congress and Maine, Master Condominium, Common Interest Community. Uh, the motion that we've asked for in the agenda is that the council authorized as the city manager to execute and record a declaration on terms substantially the same as the draft declaration reviewed, uh, on June 10th this evening. So it's not in final form, but we're asking the council to allow me to finalize it, working with our, uh, legal counsel. The document itself, uh, in terms of the intent and purpose of it, uh, it, uh, is the legal document that declares the rights and of, uh, it's equivalent in many ways to a subdivision, only it's vertical and deals with the rights on the partial across the street. There's four units that will be declared. The first is the underlying land, uh, which will remain, which will also include the parking lot in the center, followed by three additional units comprised of the buildings and the rights to build those buildings into the air.
I move that the council authorized the city manager to execute and record a condominium declaration on terms substantially the same as the draft declaration, uh, reviewed today.
Second.
Seconded by Jim, motion by Mike. Any other questions? Do you have a comment to the council with any substantial changes?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I'm getting good at requesting substantial change.
Uh, any other questions or comments for Dom? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Approving not.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the, uh, motion to approve the condominium declaration has been made.
Motion approved, meeting minutes, uh, 3:11:19.
Second. Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Motion approved, minutes, uh, 5:13:19.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim.
Easy for Kristen, you know.
You did, you, yeah, mine, mine, you did. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Motion to approve, special meeting minutes, uh, where there were several councils absent, uh, 5:21:19.
Your second?
Second.
Tim's the second, um, any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any abstention, or, uh, Marie, you did.
Chad did, I did.
Mike did.
The Mike did. Yeah, I did, yeah, I wasn't there, sorry. So the four of us were not there.
Marie, you started off that day, right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you were, you were gonna start in Cleveland, I see, right?
Is that needed technically, if there's only three of us? There's not even a majority.
It was just Kate and I. Jim, you're on that one, right? Yeah.
Kate, Jim, Jim.
Yeah, it was on three.
It was warned, uh, and we were, uh, allowed to meet and discuss, uh, but we didn't take any action per se.
No.
Right, so.
You didn't have, you couldn't have.
Yeah.
You didn't even have a warrant.
Right, so.
So we'll still approve the minutes, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Motion approved warrants, 5:17:19.
Motion to approve warrants, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by Marie. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, warrants pass.
I'm staying, I'm not moving.
Kate, I'm staying, Kristen.
Why are you staying, Kate?
I was feeling a bit nervous, Kate.
Oh, okay. Motion approved by warrants, 5:31:19.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the warrant for 5:31, uh, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, warrants approved for 5:31. I move into the mayor's report. Uh, Chip, uh, two dead trees on Main Street, and we're planning for replacing some of those.
What?
Dead trees on Main Street, there's one right behind you.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna give them a little more time to see how they react with this summer, and we'll, uh, and we'll make our decisions.
Okay, well, there's three or four, that over there.
I don't have a count.
Car show coming up, uh, I have a meeting scheduled with Kate Manahan next week. Significant change in that, looking at doing it, uh, in Taylor Park, as opposed to Human Street, so we'll have more details after I meet with her.
What are you gonna call it?
I think she's calling it the classic.
The classic car show. So.
No alliteration.
So that's, uh, coming up, um. Marty, I had a question from, uh, Mr. Copitroy. On, uh, we dug up two, two little sections on the Forest Street sidewalk that haven't been replaced in a while. Is there a timeline on those?
Uh, they're out there doing those repairs now, so I would think in the next couple of weeks, so, so, yeah, it's gonna be installed.
I think, uh, I think that's about all I have at this time.
You want to talk about some plant festivals?
Uh, we can talk about it, it's coming, uh, so, some plant festivals, August 2nd and 3rd. Planings have been done in the industrial park, the bay, uh, up by the interstate, by the, uh, lacrosse field. The city's a sponsor, the town's a sponsor, and Vermont, the Parker Bag's a sponsor. So, uh, a number of things are being planned, um, still in the works, but, um, it's getting very, very good for doing, so. Uh, the theory behind it is just trying to draw more people to downtown and get them to learn more about the city of Seattle, so. Mayor's Total Competition, uh, deadline's June 30th, uh, the theme is, uh, lakes, rivers, and waterways in Franklin and Grand Isle Counties. Pick, uh, photo they're being, are coming in now, and we'll have a reception in, in the auditorium on July 1st. I'd also like to thank, uh, I'm not sure how many people saw it, uh, we gave a little welcoming parade with the VFA softball team, um, with the help of Admiral Aaron, uh, fire, police, town, town fire as well. From all indications, it was very well received from, throughout the city, so. They just picked them up at the interstate and escorted them through the town, and, um, beautiful night with a lot of people out, so I think it's, uh, the city receives a lot of cool looks around.
I have to say, I particularly liked both the, the fire trucks out there. For a second, I thought we'd merged, but.
No, I think, uh, I give credit to Matt for that, and I reached out to the.
It's a nice touch.
And I think it was key to, to have them both, uh, doing the escort. So the fire and police both went out of their way to make it happen, and, uh, it was a nice, and that was a nice gesture. Kate?
Um, I know it's not technically in my word, and probably a bit of a broken record, but the railroad crossings on Aldis Street are just horrendous. And it's to the point that, um, I see cars.
They're four lanes.
Swerve to the right, and go onto the sidewalk, and then come back onto the road, because it's much smoother where the sidewalk is in. I mean, it just, you, you can go one mile an hour and it's not.
No, it's not slow enough.
It's slow. And so I'm thinking, we could put one of those on many of the streets in the city and solve the traffic problem.
The speed.
The speed.
It is, it is terrible.
They're just aggro.
We're, we're, we're coming, uh, we're developing four lanes of traffic. I don't know where it goes, because people are going so far out of their way to avoid them. So I'm not sure what the conversation is with the railroad or the trains, but that one, when we talk about priorities, I, I think that, from my opinion, it would, should go to the top of the list, I forgot.
All right, I'll take that to the task.
You mind if I go with Nissan Street too, because I think that's, uh, it's only, well, technically, it's only one set of tracks, but it's not getting any better either.
Especially with that being one of the safe routes, uh, safe walking routes to school, I mean, the kids are, kids are walking on very long roads.
And then also.
Mike?
Talked about the Take It Easy campaign, um, I know that we're doing the, the Lincoln sidewalks coming up. The pothole at the intersection.
sidewalks coming up, um, the pothole at the intersection of Lincoln and Bishop has gotten, like, really, really bad, um, and I'm wondering if that could just be filled with some gravel or something temporarily before it gets fully done.
Yeah.
Um, you probably already have that on your list, Marty, but I just wanted to flag that, um, and, uh, I really appreciate it, uh, Sue Prenden reached out this morning, and I think sent all of you a letter, um, uh, staff had help with the response, amend the issues or things we talked about tonight, um, painting crosswalks, order be doing the sidewalks, um, there's neighborhood conversation there, so I just wanted to make sure that, flag those concerns, and appreciate the, all of your helping, um, sort of being able to get information to folks fast, so, we've got a good response, and I'll be ready.
Chip?
I have a lot of the last.
More than Chad?
Yeah, I was quiet last time.
Marie?
Um, I have a neighbor who approached me on their driveway atrium, wondering if they could get some fill put in there at, uh, eighteen North Elm. And also, I think twenty-two needs a little bit too, closer to the edge of the road.
Are those both relatives of yours?
No, just neighbors.
Curious. Anything else?
Uh, I checked with, um, somebody on Spruce Street, asked if there was any problems down there as of late, they said no, everything's been quiet and good, so that's a positive note as compared to years past, so, um, no, I think we're, we're good.
Jen, we'll go to you.
Okay, well, I haven't heard anything from my constituents, they know where I am, they don't write cell phone numbers, it's pretty quiet, uh, so, I guess things are okay, but I guess structure in this place, I'll have a better handle on those, so, you said that should be in a week or two, or a week, week and a half, I'll be out here, um, uh, one thing now is, uh, that I should bring up that I was yelling into my phone, I'm really like you, you did my, good, the goals, um, is the practical, we got three institutions compared to.
I believe, I, you may have missed it, but I believe Chief said that there's three individuals that have started today, and.
Yeah, I'm confused, she's, uh, well, so I guess some of them.
Yeah, so that's, that's what he shared with us, that they will be.
Okay, great.
Started off. Okay, thank you. Chad?
Uh, I didn't have a lot, but now I have a few things. Uh, lower and upper Newton lights are still not sensing traffic, and the sensors around the poles, at least it looks like there are the white sensors on the pole, they're still not sensing, so, you can be sitting near on Main Street, there's no one coming up, lower Newton, and you're just sitting there at a red light that just turned red, even though there's no one there for it to turn, um.
Can we have Tony on that to remark?
Yeah, I would, I would also add that the, the light that's for southbound traffic has turned, so it almost looks like it's for the upcoming traffic on Newton.
Yeah, he's ordered a rioting for that.
And along with that is a, a sign we talked about, which I think is in the goal, that, the downcoming traffic from upper Newton has priority versus the left turning from Newton. So the green, even though I have the green light, you yield to oncoming traffic.
I just noticed the other day, I was hoping to hit Carrie up while he was here, but one plate on one of, one of the PD SUVs, it's supposed to be red with white lettering, and it's just white, there's no red to it at all, so.
License plate?
Yeah, it's sort of rear license plate on one of SUVs, it's just, it looks like it's just P.
Ah, he's undercover.
Yeah. Long as he doesn't stop me from being undercover too. One thing, I got a couple of good things, but I just kinda want, uh, an update, um, on the, well, the home park, has that, has that been approved, is that going through?
That was moved to the alleyway in between Twigs and Eats.
It's up too high, and it's already done. Uh, so I didn't know if we could find out where that is, and let me just something else.
Yeah, I'm gonna finish it.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, another thing, the, uh, the bridge on Lumna Drive is absolutely terrible, uh, I don't know if there's any way to ever fix that bridge, but, uh, maybe Mike can bring that to the tack, and just let him know that, that is absolutely atrocious, that bridge.
Lumna Drive is atrocious.
Yeah, I know, but the, the bridge is narrow, the guardrails are, it looks like it's dangerous.
It's sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah.
That bridge is slated for.
Another thing I'd like to bring up, yes, man, um, is the possibility of a crosswalk in front of Beverage Mart. So, right now, there's a lot of people that park on the south side of, of Lake and want to go to Beverage Mart, and there is no crosswalk, you gotta go down to South and North Elm, or you gotta go up to, you gotta go up further.
By, um, Performance.
Yeah, right on the other side of Peak Performance, so.
The roads are just crossed there.
Yeah, they just cross, basically, and I, I know Hunt Street, if there's a way to go from Hunt Street, I know it, it's not a dedicated, um, cutout in the sidewalk, but Beverage Mart does have, um, egress right there, right next to their building, and somehow maybe we could go there, I think it would be, you know, it's handicapped, accessible, so I think it'd need all the ADA stuff, I just don't.
The trouble is, I don't, I mean, you could quote it in, I suppose, the trouble is I don't think you're supposed to have one out of egress, those cars are pulling out, the.
I mean, we can talk to, maybe we could talk to Ross, maybe not make that egress for vehicles, I was kinda hoping when he redid that parking lot to have them not.
He was out of it, he wanted to preserve it when we put that sidewalk in.
Yeah, it's, until one person comes out from the edge of that building and someone cracks him, so. Uh, and then I have two really good things, the first one is, uh, the plantings, they've started some plantings in, uh, in Holy Park, so they've started a, uh, a planting guild, so they planted some trees, and they got some blueberries now, so that's coming, uh, along really good, actually, like that along, um, and I just wanna say, uh, the Public Works guys have been out in the streets a lot lately, they've been sweeping, um, filling some holes, so, uh, many thanks to, to those guys, the city's really starting to look good, I know they've got a million projects, they're trying to do green dust up on Diamond Street and all of the other projects, and, uh, those guys are doing a great job, so.
Thank you.
I think that is it.
Chip?
Okay, I've got some, uh, in no particular order, uh, the first is, um, the Memorial Day event that we had, uh, Mr. Mary, you did an excellent job. Uh, your speech was an excellent speech, uh, I didn't think you could beat Marty or Liz's, but you came pretty darn close if you didn't outdo them, but you did. Um, unfortunately, the sound system up there is terrible, um, the Main Street noise was, was a little loud, and some of those folks that speak there, of course, are, are veterans, and they're very soft spoken, and when they're speaking into that microphone system, uh, the people in the back couldn't hear, so I just wish we could improve that in some way. The other thing, two things that were frustrating for me at that event was, uh, again, there was no police officer at the top of, uh, Kingman Street and Main Street, therefore, when the kids were marching down, uh, from the BFA band in front of the park, the traffic was still flowing, uh, uh, south on Main Street, I think very dangerous, because people were coming out of their, from where the vehicles are parked to, to view the parade, and, um, the cars were just sailing down there, so I, they had, uh, police officers at, um, at, uh, Lake Street, at Fairfield Street, but they needed to have one at the top of Kingman, so that they could direct the traffic coming south on Main Street, either down, uh, Kingman Street, or up, um, up, uh, Bank Street, until the parade got up to Bank Street, uh, so that was problematic, the other thing are those pits in the park, uh, where there were some people, uh, fooling around, uh, with, uh, in an unsafe manner, uh, you know, there were some kids there, and they were, you know, jumping off into the pit, the, the four pits we have there, I don't know what those are called.
Oh, on the front of the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Nine, nine, stormwater.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's, some, someone's gonna get hurt there one day, I fear it's gonna be at night when someone doesn't know it's there, uh, and they're really gonna get hurt, um, so that's it on Memorial Day. Dom, thank you for the, uh, responses, for the questions I had from Ward One people regarding Tiff and the recent auditor's statements, um, I, I feel that a couple of questions from people, and I've referred, uh, to the, uh, staff, and they've got some good responses, so now they can, um, make their own assessments with real information instead of misinformation. There's, I've been a recent, um, uh, development of a law on Brainerd Street, uh, single-family housing after a house burned down, um, I pray that the building permit required that person who built that house to pave that driveway and concrete that sidewalk, and that it's not gonna be left in the position it's in now, um, for some reason, I have in the back of my mind that it didn't happen, and I hope later on when we're permitting, uh, projects that, in the city, uh, that the requirement is they pave the driveway and the sidewalk is, is, uh, either paved or concrete, those developers, uh, or builders can afford to do that.
Should be part of an excavation permit, actually, the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't know, Marty, you might want to drive up, take, you know what I'm talking about, right? If you drive up there, take a look at it, I hope it doesn't stay that way, but if it does, it does.
Our permit rules do not require that you pave driveways.
That's unfortunate. The other thing is, um, I, I noticed the shopping center has taken a turn for the worse, people have said, you know, it's in my ward, and, and people have said things about it before, but, uh, a recent walk-through, and I went through there with Lori the other day, just looking around, and it's, it's just, is, you know, the things are crumbling, and they tried to make some improvements, the signs are bent, uh, those, uh, rails with the big guards, uh, posts there are knocked down, where the cars have hit them, they're not being repaired, uh, in a timely manner, uh, and it's just, uh, it's almost an embarrassment, and it shouldn't be, it should be something we should be proud of, uh, and I think before that developer gets another permit, he should be required to fix what's there, that's just a, I don't need any comments to that, but this is a statement, and I will attend the next, uh, uh, meeting where that developer comes to, uh, request a permit from the DRB if he does.
I think there's one on the.
Yeah, they were recessed last week.
They'll be in front of the DAB fourth Monday of the month, this month.
Okay, um, the other thing is, uh, we've, we've got a few vacant buildings, uh, in the city, including buildings that the city owns, uh, even though they're vacant, they don't have to look like they're rundown, um, I think that we should make, um, an ordinance or a requirement that if you have a building that's vacant, uh, waiting for tenants to come in, that you at the very minimum sweep in front of the building and clean the windows, um, it absolutely looks like a rundown mess, uh, and I'm embarrassed to say the city owns some of the properties, but it's not just the city, it's a couple, and I know the city's cleaned them a couple of times, but I've, I've even got clients who own some buildings, uh, that are vacant, that have, the, the, their, uh, the windows are all clouded, and the vacant signs are, you know, are, are tilted, and they just look like slum places, and I just, there should be an ordinance somewhere that says, if your, if your building's vacant, you at least gotta keep the windows washed and cleaned, and, uh, the front of the building in, in good order, and I understand we're gonna have vacant buildings. The last thing I wanna talk about is the state of the taxi service in the city of St. Albans, um, I'm, over the last several years, uh, I'm a person that goes out a lot, uh, and I talk to a lot of people, I get a lot of my business from the people that are around the city, the people that I see between, you know, five, four, and eight o'clock at night, um, and a lot of complaints that I hear about are, uh, there's unreliable taxi service in the city of St. Albans, uh, you're calling them up, and there's, they, they don't wanna take you to where you've gotta go, or they shut down at six or seven o'clock at night, um, and people are going out and they're having a few drinks, and there's no way for them to get home because there's no reliable taxi service, um, and you never know when they're in operation, um, and there's just no reliability, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, um, if there's any conditions we can impose on having a taxi, uh, service license in the city of St. Albans, I know I've talked to Curry on a couple of occasions, and there's people, there's taxis that are, are driving around the city of St. Albans that don't have licenses, um, um, so, you know, I think it would be a good business, um, and, uh, but I just can't seem to remember from, until Fabe Taxi when I was a kid, of a reliable at Pontiac Cab, those were two taxi services that were very, very reliable.
Shamrock.
Yeah, Sham, uh, yep, Shamrock was a, was one, and you just can't find those today, and I don't know what the city can do about it to provide services for people that either need to go up to the medical center, and if they can't get a ride, they call, they get an ambulance coming to their, to their, to their place, or people who are out late at night, uh, and are afraid to, um, uh, get behind the wheel, uh, because they know the consequences, and there's no other way for these people to get around, uh, and we have an unreliable taxi service, I don't know what it is we can do, if there's anything we can do, but I, I wish someone would just take a look at it, and see if there's some, uh, rules or regulations we can impose on a, on a, a company that wants to do business in the city and have a taxi service, what hours of operation they have to, uh, provide, and what standards of, of, um, quality they have to provide, so.
Some aren't as for though, to some extent, I mean, if you provide crap service, people just aren't going to use Uber, right? What happens if you use Uber?
There is, Uber is, is, uh, and I use Uber a lot when I'm in New York City, and I go to New York City quite often, and when I'm in Florida, I use Uber a lot, um, there is not that quality here, and Uber is paid, Uber drivers are paid very, very small amounts of money, uh, and so there's really no impetus, because there's not the amount of service for them up here, so, I know a couple of people that tried to start it, but they just didn't maintain it because there wasn't enough, um, but, I'm, I think if there was one good taxi service, or two good taxi services, uh, that, and then all other services are required to have a permit, or else they're fined heavily, there'll only be a couple of taxi services, and if they provide a good level of service, they're gonna have a good business, I've almost thought about doing it myself, uh, but, you know, I've got other things on my plate, so, just, I think the city should have a. The shit, the city should have a good, uh, taxi service, we're big enough to have a good taxi service, and we don't have one.
Can I jump in on that?
Yes.
I definitely have been looking at the taxi ordinance and, you know, trying to figure out why we're regulating it, and what regulations we do have, really looking at the ordinance, and making sure I'm keeping track of all the vehicles and people who did turn in applications, you know, maybe I could even reach out to some of them, change the application, see what kind of hours, if we can't mandate it, they might want to do that, say, oh, wow, that would probably be good for my business, so I could try to reach out, I don't know if it's the best solution, but it could be something, I think I only received three to four applications this year, um, and making sure they're requiring their insurances and safety and the manuals.
We could, we could juice the market by limiting the entrance and requiring, setting the terms, you know, so, if we're only gonna have X number, and you gotta get a license, and if you don't have it, you can't do business yet.
Yeah, there are a number of people, I know, 'cause I, I've been to the certain bars where they, they've got a car, and, you know, call me up, and people are going from their house and taking people around, uh, and, and no one wants to drive with them.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, I don't know, it's just a mess, it's, you know, you could have a very long conversation about it, um.
Maybe for, uh, another conversation at another meeting, we should maybe consider around contracting the taxi service to provide the services we want.
That's all.
Thank you, Chad.
You're gonna be last from now on.
Actually, I just, I just wanted to build off on that, I, and I don't know what the solution is on this either, but in some ways it's embarrassing to turn out for Memorial Day, I mean, we should have, and, and, you know, I don't know what our role would be, but, um, you know, it's like someone pointed out, I think, uh, well, I don't know what I'm saying, but someone pointed out that the wreaths that were laid were fake flowers and stuff, I mean, I think if we could build a relationship with VFW of the American Legion and try to expand that a little bit, uh, so it's, we can showcase the veterans a little bit more, both on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, I think would be, um, would be, uh, a lot of people.
So hurry up, we're running out of time.
The other thing I had, couple of, last thing, was the tree drive that Dave, Dave did with the hundred and fifty trees, I guess they all went, which was great, uh, Chip, you know the outcome?
Yeah, we handed out most of the trees, and we are finding homes for those that were not picked up, it was a great event, it sold out really fast on Facebook, um, a hundred fifty trees, um.
So I was going up to Far Street, I saw that, uh, it has been.
So I was going up the Far Street, I saw that, uh, it has been, um, it's been flagged with gas lines, and then there's an orange and white flag, are those trees that are going into Green Bell?
Oh yeah, that's part of the city's regular Green Bell Tree Program. The tree giveaway event was a separate thing, a bonus.
But I worry if you see those orange and white flags as a, a new, uh, new tree.
Yeah. And those start going in Wednesday.
Just two quick things, uh, I have no problem with, as Marty, I guess this may be more of you, in the morning, I think about it, I, I brought flowers down to the nail salon that opened up on the bottom of King Street, Kingman Street. I think we as a city need to be more welcoming, and not that we're not welcoming, but more make a bigger deal out of businesses that are opening and welcome, and, uh, you know, the bouquet of flowers is thirty-five, fifty bucks, I don't, I think that's minor. And then I, as I look around, um, you know, there's a new shop over where, you know, uh, Hair Salon was across from the shopping center, and so, as they come out, I have no problem getting up with bouquet of flowers and running them, just thanking for doing business in the city. We should do the same for the new hair salon that started over here where Subway was.
The Merchants Committee has talked about doing a welcoming committee, going into those businesses, I had
I just think we need to, we just need to make sure they know that people appreciate them doing business in the city. Um, and then the last one was, um, when you get your water bill next month, uh, we, I started doing a, um, quick newsletter that tossing out all the activities in the region, and, um, it's going out, included in the water bills as to the, when the concerts start, uh, the car show, all that stuff. And you'll see that I did include when we talked about including the fire car, the fire trucks and the, and the sort of escort for the softball. I included town, uh, events in there as well.
Nice.
Just sort of bringing that all together. Our events here in the city are not restricted to city residents and vice versa, so, uh, you'll see that in your, in your water bill, and I'll I'll try to coordinate better with, um, Kristen moving forward, so that we can hit everyone with some type of if we're making the mailing and we got room in the envelope, without costing us a little bit more, I think we, uh, take that initiative and that.
Have any, uh, final business, any other business?
Can you see, can you see your hands for a second? Did you get your nails done for free for your little flowers?
I was extending my
Looking pretty nice over there.
Anything else, Doc, you got anything?
No, I, I, I do have to commend the mayor, who doesn't have a Facebook account, barely has a cellphone, on his ability to get ninja posts on the city's Facebook page. I haven't figured out how he's doing it, but.
I got a publicist. He's in the audience, sounds like he's good today. So, uh, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Opened by Chad, opened by Jim.
See you, Jim.
Thank you all.
Thank you, I did.